Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene.
Can you need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Stephanie.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey, do you have a hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. We're going to continue the public hearing and, folks, thank you for your patience. We know we were out there quite a while, but the reason is when we went into executive session, we needed to discuss pending litigation with the property at 953 Central Street, and we're just trying to work towards a resolution to that property. I think the problem that exists right now is that we have certain conditions on that property that we cannot enforce because the matter is under appeal, so we have no authority to enforce any of those conditions that we had previously put on there. So, that's what we were doing, and we're going to continue to work toward that for the best interest of everybody. I understand this was a public hearing, it was listed on the agenda, so there's probably some people here who have been waiting a while and wanted to say something, and we would like to allow you to speak. I know that the attorney is here, so certainly start off with him. Just to let you know that our responses, if we respond at all, are going to be very guarded because of the nature of the litigation, and we really can't say too much about it, unfortunately. But, thanks again for your patience, and is there anybody here wishing to address the board at 953 Central Street? Attorney Tenza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here on behalf of the neighborhood, Mr. and Mrs. Kunchiko. I've been here for the last three years since, I think it was 2005, December of 2005. The board initially, Councilor Kazangian was on the board, and they made certain recommendations. Those recommendations apparently have not been followed to date. I drove by there. The property has cleaned up a bit. They got rid of some signs, which was nice for the neighborhood. They actually lined the parking lot, which was a bonus. But, since December, when we were, November, when we were last here, my clients have once again monitored their hours. They live right across the street. If you need them to testify, they certainly would, but I can make the representation that these are from my client, and these are the dates and times that this gentleman closed. Most of the time, they were not within the given guidelines. Most of the time, it was after 5:30. Saturdays, after 1 o'clock. So, I would submit these to the board. And once again, you know, I guess frustrated, probably as much as you folks, maybe a little more, given the fact that if Mr. Santos has appealed the conditions, then it's my understanding that he's appealed the permit. If he's appealed the permit, then he shouldn't be operating, period. If he hasn't appealed, if somebody else has appealed, then he needs to go by what this board says. So, litigation or not, he either can operate, or if he's appealed the decision, then he shouldn't be operating at all. Just my two cents. The neighbors, there is a handful of neighbors here that are present that wanted, just to make sure that the board knew that he is still not complying with the hours. I appreciate the time. I appreciate whatever you guys can do for the neighborhood. If I may pass this in, Mr. Chairman?
Thanks, Attorney Tenza. Your points are well taken, and just so you know, we are working and looking into all of those issues, and that's part of what's going on. Thanks. And, Dan, you understand the situation where it is under appeal, and both parties have appealed the owner and the tenant, so that's the, there is a lawsuit pending. It has been crawling through the court systems, but because of that, we cannot enforce those conditions.
My position goes back to 2005. He either has a permit as of 2005, or he doesn't. I definitely understand the board's position as far as enforcing the terms, but if he truly appeals the permit, then he gets, it shouldn't be that he could do whatever he wants. He can't operate, it should be, he can't operate until that's decided, until what the terms and conditions are. So, I go back to 2005, when I think wrongfully, he started operating even though he did appeal the conditions. So...
Points well taken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess what we need now is a motion to continue this to the next regularly scheduled hearing, which is when, Stephanie? May, May 27th. So, I need a motion?
Motion to continue till May 27th.
Second the motion.
Roll call, please, Stephanie?
Bailey?
Yes.
Do you have a hearing?
Continue.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue to May 27th.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue.
Okay, that matters. Continued until May 27th. There'll be no further notice. Anybody wishing to address the board, that will be a public hearing on that day. Thank you again for your time and patience. Moving on to the agenda, the continuances, ZB 200910. This is a petition for a variance. Edward and Alice Draper, 208 Trotting Park Road. This is a single, I'm sorry, a suburban, single-family district, and the petition's a subdivide. The existing lot can construct a single family without the required frontage. Would anybody, would anybody care to address the board on this? Hi, thank you.
Hi, Alice and Ed Draper here.
Okay.
There were some questions at the last meeting.
Okay.
Some concerns, so I looked into some matters, and I passed out copyzers to issues that there were. There was question about the driveway being called a common right-of-way. I looked up our original deed and the original deed from number 206, and the deeds stated as a common right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
And the other issue was to how that common land for the three drive was going to be, as far as maintenance and utilities and all that, how that would be handled. So, I did, I spoke with my attorney regarding that, and he said, you know, he did say it could be awarded in the deed, so that's taken care of. And also, I found another property in the city with a similar situation, in the way they have a driveway easement recorded. I've included that with the package to show as an example. I also met with engineering and the water departments as far as what their requirements would be for bringing water and sewer up there, so they stated what we would need, and it seemed like it wouldn't be a problem as long as we met their requirements, so it's something that's certainly feasible.
And there was the issue, I think we had suggested maybe you could save some money and time by connecting in somewhere with the water. Did you already address that? I mean, where the hydrant was, or?
Well, the water department said there is a fire hydrant on Trotting Park Road across the street from our, the present driveway, but the water department said, when we run a water line up to the three properties, they want a hydrant at the end of the line, too. So, we'll have to install a hydrant at the end of the line up near where the three homes are.
Okay, and you're aware of that expense and everything?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Whatever the requirements are. Another thing that my attorney actually had brought up, the fact that if this lot, new lot is approved, where we're cutting into the other two lots, where we're cutting into the frontage, we're going to be decreasing their frontage. So, those lots, in essence, will become non-conforming lots at that point, so I'm looking to wondering if this lot is approved, whether that will make all three lots still approved.
Well, I think when we, when you were here, the last public hearing, we brought up some of those issues, saying that when you reconfigure this, it may, you know, we suggested you talk to a lawyer and maybe your, I think.
Yes.
We suggest you talk to a lawyer and maybe your engineer, and try to figure out what those issues are, but, you know, my understanding, and Mr. Camacho can correct me if I'm wrong, but you can't do that kind of on the fly here. It has to be a public hearing, so you can't say, "Can we approve that while you're here?" And then approve the other lots as non-conforming.
So, this law could get, could get approved, I mean, because the process right now that we're going for is approving this lot, but then, like I said, the other two lots will at that time be non-conforming lots, so that would, would have to go through the whole process again to get those two lots as conforming lots?
That's correct.
It is, and I...
And it's just a matter of, you know, the frontage would be affected on the two existing lots?
Right, but the question is, I mean, there's no guarantees. What if this was approved? I mean, I'm just thinking aloud, but what if this were approved tonight, and then your other two lots became non-conforming, and they weren't approved? Now, you're stuck with two non-conforming lots. So, I mean, there's a, there's a procedure, how it's done, and I think because of the, you know, the magnitude of what you're proposing here, I think we all agree, it's a, it's, I think it's a pretty good project, but I think that you need some more help with it, because we can't approve this lot and then approve two non-conforming lots tonight. And the risky run if we approve this is that you may get stuck, we don't know what happens. What if other issues come up? What if there's some other things that, that come into play that make your other two lots non-conforming, and we really didn't do you any good? Anybody else have any thoughts on this?
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting we had on this, I'd asked the question about, because they were basically taking, I guess, square footage from two different lots, theirs including their, their daughters, I believe, as far as the application went, do we really, do we need, is it to your point that, do we need two parties on there as the applicants in order to make this work?
You would need, you absolutely do. You can't, you can't petition to, for somebody else's lot unless they give you an agency to do that. So, I mean, my feeling is, and I could be wrong, maybe Rick can fill us in a little bit, but if you did this all as one project and came in with the plans and, you know, you almost need an attorney to help you go through this, so you don't keep coming back and delaying your project and, you know, getting exasperated.
Like I said, I did meet, I did meet with my attorney.
He brought this up.
I haven't looked, he's the one that, you know...
Okay, who's your attorney?
Brian Barry.
Okay.
I mean, should we start this whole process over and just, you know, make sure everything, try to have all the bases covered?
Well, I would talk to Attorney Barry, he knows what to do. I would talk to him, but I think that you kind of have to, I think you have to start over and come up with a plan. I mean, if you're just finding out as you go through this, after you've already been to a public hearing, that by doing this, you're now diminishing the other lots and then becoming now non-conforming, falling outside of the zoning requirements, then it just tells me that you kind of have to start over and figure out exactly what you're doing here, and just do it right by the numbers. It is a complicated system to go through if you don't do it, and I think if you were just looking for a simple variance and there was one house there, then you probably wouldn't need to go to the expense of, you know, an engineer and an attorney, but I think with what you're planning, it's probably, I mean, unless you can figure out some way to present it to us yourself, I think that's the way to go. But if we approve this tonight, and I think people were prepared, they were inclined to, because of, you know, your, what you were doing last time, we had some questions we wanted answered, but then they become non-conforming, the other two lots. You made somebody else's lot non-conforming that you don't own.
My, well, yeah, my daughter, yeah, yeah.
It was my daughter who was here at the last meeting.
Right, but, but, I don't think there's any difference whether she's your daughter or a stranger.
Yeah.
You've made somebody else's lot non-conforming because, and I don't think we can do that. So, Rick, do you have anything?
I'm trying to think back. Bob, through you, to the commissioner, do we, the lot that they, you're proposing to build a house on, is that an A&R lot, Bob? Did they go for an A&R? Did they go to the planning board for an A&R or not property?
I don't, I don't believe they did.
No, no. I, before I started this whole process, I went to the planning board, I showed it to them, and they suggested that I come through zoning first, because I need the variance from zoning just because of the lack of frontage. There's plenty of square footage and everything else, that the frontage is the only thing that doesn't meet the zoning requirements.
Correct, but I, that's why, as the chairman says, I think you should talk to your lawyer, because I think you're going to need an A&R plan, signed and approved by the planning board, which then gives you the right to cut that piece off the property you already own, and then now you have no frontage. You know, your frontage is lacking for all three lots. You would get a variance or a...
Variance, correct, Bob?
Or special permit?
I believe so, yes, variance.
Variance for all three, and because they're family, I mean, you've done everything we've asked, sewer, hydrant. It's a great project. I would just like to see it done, so there's no problems.
All the bases are covered.
And the problems just arose, so...
Right, the problems aren't going to be our problems, they're going to be your problems.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I understand that, yeah.
You go to sell the property, and the next thing you know, well, where's the A&R for this lot? Well, they just let me build the house. It just creates legal problems that it'll cost you to fix.
Yeah.
So, through you, to your lawyer, why don't you sit down and maybe sit with the commissioner and the planning board or whatever, make sure it's proper. I have no problem with it. You've done everything we asked, the sewer, the water, everything. It works, you're all family. It's not, it's not, nothing different, but by lopping that off, you just made non-conforming lots.
Right, so we, I mean, maybe as a suggestion, we could continue the case for, you know, not the next meeting. That may not give Attorney Barry enough time to do what he needs to do, or whoever you bring in, but maybe to the meeting after that, unless you think you can get it done in that time, would be certain, you know, would be, would be willing to give it to you.
But do I have to go through the whole process again as far as like petitioning, just like starting the whole process with the abuddhas list and all that, and the notices, legal notices? I mean, is that what we need to do?
I think as far as the other lots are concerned, you do. You may not, as far as this, but I suggest, like, Rick suggested a meeting with maybe your attorney and the building commissioner and somebody from the planning department. You can piece all these things together. You've done, the hardest part is over. You've already gone to the various departments, and you gotten the feedback that we need. Now, you just have to legally piece it together, so you don't end up with a title issue after all this is approved.
Yeah, that's why, like I said, when I met with Attorney Barry, he's the one that actually brought this up, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, just something that hadn't come up, you know?
Yeah, and sometimes it helps, a lot of the attorney comes and presents the petition to us, and that way, you know, we can make sure that we have everything dotted and crossed. So, is that, you think that gives you enough time to the next meeting, which is the 27th of May, or do you want to go to the one after that?
No, the one after that, probably, June, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, what is it?
The June.
June 8th?
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I could. Bob, their petition now, could their petition still stay, and then once we get this all figured out, they just come in for the two other lots and let their other petition continue to run, be, be held over or continue? Could you look into that for us to make sure that, that way they wouldn't have to re-advertise that, and it's kind of...
I believe that's true, but I'll get that verified, yeah.
Okay, that, that way you wouldn't have to...
I think, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think that your petition can stay alive because we are actually continuing that, so there's no reason to re-advertise something because everybody's on notice that we're continuing until that time. But, as far as the other lots, as far as the public's concerned, nobody knows anything about that, and I don't foresee any issues, but the process is, there has to be a public hearing, and attendant to the public hearing is public notice. So, everybody has to have proper notice that there is a hearing, so for those other two lots, but confirm all that, and then, and then, you know, if the motion approved to continue to June 8th, I think that gives you enough time, and then we can take care of everything.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion?
Motion to continue to June 8th.
No.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Continue to June 8th.
Continue to June 8th?
Continue to June 8th.
Continue to June 8th.
Okay, folks, as far as it pertains to 208 Trotting Park Road, this matter's been continued. The public hearing has been continued to June 8th, 2009, and anything else, you have to coordinate the timing with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next petition is ZB 2009, number 13. This is a special permit for signs. The applicant is RF Construction and Maintenance, located at 24 Branch Street. This is a neighborhood business district, and the petition would like to install an internally illuminated projecting sign for jewelry store, a retail location at 28 Branch Street, according to section 6.3.2 of the zoning code. Would a representative of 24 Branch Street please address the board? Welcome, sir.
Yes, good, welcome. Good afternoon, how you doing?
Hi.
We're just trying to make a...
State your name and address for the record.
Rodney Fisher, 32 Willis Street in Lowell, Massachusetts.
Okay, and you somebody?
My name is Solia Black, and I'm the owner of the building 24 Branch Street.
Okay, what is your address, sir, for the record? Your residential address, for the record?
I live about 26 Branch Street.
Thank you.
And I do be on the fifth floor.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Well, we're just trying to make another appeal to you, because my client doesn't believe that he exhausted the opportunity to try to be able to put the sign up where he requested. We met with Diane and Sean over there at DBA and stuff, and they did, just as you mentioned at the last meeting, what they were expressed was the concern, and that's why we were attempting to try to get a special permit. And one of the main reasons that we feel that, you know, he should be able to have the opportunity, that hopefully you guys would reconsider on his request, is for one, you know, he's a small business, and I think, but本来是made up of small businesses, you know, here in Lowell and stuff, and all he is, is just trying to do is have an opportunity, because that's his livelihood, right there in that spot where he's at, and just as Diane and Sean mentioned, that they was doing some development there, and as you can look even that area, because I even have two active clients on that same street that are looking for, to do work, too, to improve their, their appearance and the condition of their business and their buildings that are on that street. And I think this would be a perfect opportunity for you guys to be supportive to this gentleman here, too, that he may have the opportunity to do that, too, you know, if he's allowed to have this special permit, because I think, you know, one of the concerns they expressed is the safety of that thing. It's actually, where it's going to be installed at is actually pretty much safe as it could actually be, because it's going to be in the center of that building, and even if it's illuminated, it wouldn't, you know, because you could stand from either side, it would not be reflecting into no residential, which is behind him. You know, there's businesses that are in front of him and on the, on the left and the right.
Okay, so I'm looking at the picture of the proposed sign, and we do have some correspondence from the design planner who recommends that it be denied for several reasons, and you mentioned that you discussed this with her?
Yes, we did.
And what, what would...
And she just was concerned because that's what's on there, on her books and stuff, as far as the way, the height, the limitation and everything, and that's why, you know, just from reading the book, and the code book and the zone laws, it says that if we apply for the special permit with, you know, you know, given the reason why, and that's sound enough, hopefully it will get approved, you know, because I think, you know, even the height, because of the way that building's structured there, he's, that's the only place where he can actually really place it, without it being subject to being on the balcony, which would be protruding over onto the public right-of-way. So, he's actually literally trying to avoid that, and then he doesn't want it to put it on the other side, because there's an abundant property, residential property that's right there, and it wouldn't be visible to anybody.
I mean, it is, you know, from what we normally see here at the board, it is a little bit of an unusual sign from what I can see, unless anybody knows anything else about it. They also mentioned that you, there's nothing in the packet about the materials, the proposed sign materials, what it's going to be made out of, what it's going to look like, aside from this picture.
Yeah, there was one, I don't, that must have, because when we made the packages there, but as, because I had one in mind.
Well, I have the picture, but what is, what is, what is it made out of?
It's aluminum. It's made out of aluminum with the iron brackets that support it from both sides and from the top, so it actually be lag bolted into the, into the building and prevented from swaying either sideways or up and down.
What about the, what's your response to the city planner's recommendation to the externally illuminated wall signage for this location? In other words, I mean, I'm looking at the facade of the building, and it appears to be several other signs on there. I mean, what would be, why does this sign have to stand out so much?
Well, for one, for visibility, because a lot of times, because of that location there, I mean, even if you stood over there, that, and if somebody calls him on the phone trying to find his place of business and stuff, they actually literally miss it, because they don't see, because you can actually bypass that from, because of the way the building on this right-hand side is out a little bit farther than his is even on that corner, and then from the other direction, it comes in from an angle when you're coming from off of the ramp there. So, he's just trying to just make it a little bit more visible. You know, and then traffic-wise, it's not really good for someone to be, especially in that area where the fire department is, and the boys' club, and the police substation over there for people to be, you know, trying to find a place of business and have to be holding up traffic, because it does get pretty busy at a busy, you know, at the normal busy time in that area.
Thank you, sir. I'll get back to you in one second. Bob, if this sign, just so I'm, I'm just a little bit confused, this sign, the request is for a special permit, but it appears as though the code only allows 16 square feet, and this is a proposed 24 feet, why wouldn't he need a variance? A special permit to allow that sign there, but if he's exceeding the square footage, wouldn't that be a variance issue?
It would, yes, that's correct. So theoretically, if the sign is bigger than what's allowed or permitted, he should also be coming in for a variance as well.
Right. Okay, anybody else have anything to say? Bill, anything?
The only comment I had, Mr. Chairman, was I guess I'm relying on the code inspector that basically is stating that, you know, the city code reads as follows, which the gentleman is aware of, and I understand the conversation, but I guess I would leave it up to the department to, if that's the code for the city, then that's the code for the city. But if we're talking about a different approach here, then maybe that's something we need to entertain, and I'll listen to the other board members.
Yeah, it appears as though you have at least a couple of issues that are maybe variance issues and not special permit issues, where you're going beyond what the code even allows you to do. That, you know, under these conditions, it's not something that, on a sign like that, that it's, you know, normally supported. But, Jack?
Three, Mr. Chairman. It's not just the size of the sign, it's also the height of the sign. And what I don't understand, I would presume that if you go to the effort of meeting with Diane and her department, she discusses the codes with you. If you disagree with them, the word that would come to mind would be compromise. And basically, from what I can understand, you met with Diane Trad and her department, came back, you disagree with her decision and with the codes, and you want us to approve it based on your fact, simple fact that you disagree with the codes. I can't support it.
Well, it's not so much, we're not, there's not, definitely not a disagreement and stuff, it's understanding that. That's why I believe that they made possible for the special permit, and also just as the building commissioner mentioned, even a variance, he has no problem even applying for that.
But, again, the specific codes and statutes state, there are specific dimensions for the size of the sign, and also the height of the sign, which was what instituted the concerns about safety. And you haven't addressed any sort of compromise pertaining to any of those issues. So, how do you expect this board to support it?
Okay, I, I do understand the code, but I take a look on my neighbor, I see the pilot have the same sign, the light sign inside, and I see on boy club, the pilot from my building, only three houses, two, through the pilot building, and they have the light sign, too. And from one block from my building, that at the boy club, they have sign, the inside light sign, too, and about two blocks on the same side, they have a couple sign, too. And why not that not, zone what not, not for the favor for us?
It's not just the sign, sir, it's the size of the sign. You referenced signs that were inside. This isn't external... This is an external sign, okay, aluminum, above the safety standards and the size is above the safety standards. To me, it's very simple. It's black and white. If you're willing to come up with, and go back and meet, meet with the commissioner to come up with some kind of alternative, then we can consider it. But if Diane and her department sends us this in black and white, I, again, I respectfully disagree and don't understand your position and thank you.
Vezina?
Question I have is pertaining to the discussion with Diane from the DPD about the size of the sign. This here is four by six. When Diane indicated that it's not conformed with the zoning code, did Diane, did you and Diane come up with some sort of compromise as my fellow board member addressed, brought up? Was there any discussion about, can you reduce the size so that maybe it meet or conform with or somewhere in between? Was there any discussion on that?
Well, one of the things that they brought up, her and Sean, because they both were there, was what she wanted, what her, their suggestion was and they just flat right on Saturday, they haven't in the past allowed any illuminated signs on that street or anywhere on there. That's the statement that she said. It wasn't that it so much was based on the code, which everybody's aware of the code. You know, that's why the special permit's available for people to try to get, you know, something in their favor, but it was because she said they just in that area haven't allowed any aluminum lights. And then that's when we brought up about the other lights that it is, but they had no record of knowledge of when those lights were installed. So if it was pre-existent before that code was in there or whether the case means, no one really knows that, they didn't know that, so.
So there was no discussion about a compromise with the size of the sign?
Well, no, we brought up, well, actually I brought up a suggestion that one of the things that he probably possibly could do is if they're not going to allow him to do that, is to, you know, put a sign on the balcony and then just have lights beam over it and stuff, you know?
The other question I have is about the structures. I noticed that the height is exceeding the code. Also, I noticed that appeared to be that it started from the ground. Is that the structure from the ground up or from somewhere else?
The sign?
The structure of the sign, just so.
No, it's going to be attached to the, to that building right there and stuff with a eye rod that's going this way and that way with lag bolts and then also an iron rod holding the top of it from sway.
My question is, is start from the ground, the structure of the sign, start from the ground or start from somewhere else?
It starts from the second floor balcony.
From the deck?
Yes.
What structure are you going to, you know, put on there?
Well, it's going to be a, an iron pipe.
That I do the building.
Yeah, an iron pipe with a plate down on the bottom holding the front edge and then two rods on each side of it for sway bar and then a wire on the top of it holding it.
If we talk about the public safety, I believe that our proposal much better than the Diane one or two, to extend only four by four, but extend on the, about the street and we needed to buy the insurance. That's not a good idea, we have to pay for insurance and, but if we install above the porch, if something happened, it's still there.
What is the, I don't mean to interrupt, but what does, what does it say thirty feet for? What is the thirty feet reference?
Well, that's from the ground.
From the ground.
I thought he just asked if it was coming from the ground up.
No, the height of the, you know, they're doing the measurement from there, but actually the height of it's from the top of that balcony there.
About seven.
Yeah, it's about only eight feet from that, from the balcony.
Then why does it say thirty feet?
Well, it's, if you look at the arrows, from the ground down to the street, to the sidewalk.
So from the ground to the top is thirty, it's going to be thirty foot pole somehow?
No, not a pole, that's just the height of the top of the sign from the ground up.
Nothing on the ground is. Okay, I'm looking, the picture's deceiving because I'm looking at the picture, it looks like a pole.
Was that brought up with Diane though about the high? Because it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, okay, it sounds like it did not start from the ground, the structure start from the deck up?
No, it starts from, that thirty feet starts from the ground up. If it was on the deck, it's only eight feet in the air.
I'm confused. Okay, anything else? Kevin, anything?
I would just echo the sentiments of my fellow board members that the size, the height create safety issues that have not seemed to be addressed. The size of the sign is bigger than the code allows and the potential light and disruption to the neighborhood.
Kevin?
Those would be my concerns.
I'm sorry. Did you finish, Kevin? Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the building commissioner. Bob, how would he go about getting a variance for this, considering a variance has to do with topography, soil conditions? Do we have something on the books that allows us or doesn't allow us or?
Well...
It's oversized, obviously, it's...
That's actually a very good question. It obviously wouldn't apply to topography, soil conditions, et cetera. One option here would be to have this gentleman and his contractor meet with us during the day and to sit down and find out exactly what he's, what he's looking for, looking to do and see what his options are because I don't think they're clear here tonight.
No, it's confusing.
And he actually, they actually haven't done that. I mean, they've been in our office, they've talked to the zoning officer to some degree, but I think there's some things that need to be cleared up.
And could we get something from DPD? What are they looking for? I know they're looking to change the, the look over there. I know some of the signs, the signs are mentioned and they've been up for a long time. The boys' club's been up since whatever, seventies. I don't know when the other signs went up and I don't know if the zoning code has changed with signs in the city since those signs were placed. Obviously, we want him to stay in business, we want him to thrive in business, we want to help him, but obviously he has too big of a sign. It's thirty feet off the ground, it's only eight feet off a deck, but what the DPD, I want to know what they said, did they recommend something different? Did they recommend it to be, you know, next to his other signs that are low and, you know, flush? I mean, those are the things.
What I have here, Rick, just to interrupt, it says, "I recommend externally illuminated wall signage for this location."
Externally?
Externally illuminated wall signage for this location.
All right, so they want us to overhang the lights and shine the lights on it instead of through it, being a block sign.
And maybe, I'm only reading into it, but maybe, you know, adhere it to the deck? The deck's stable?
Well, we're looking at two different signs. They're recommending a wall sign and they're proposing a sign that projects.
They want a wall sign, right? Yeah, that's what I figured, I thought they wanted a wall sign.
Right, this on two separate pages.
Is that correct? Mr. Chairman, was that correct? They want a wall sign?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, well, I recommend an externally illuminated wall sign for this location. That's all, that's the only sentence I read.
From DPD.
But it, the other problem I think we have is if the code doesn't allow it, a special permit is to allow you to have the sign, but if we're exceeding the code, what mechanism do we have that allows us to do that? I just, not looking for an answer, but I think that's one thing that needs to be explored. So maybe what we'll do is open up to the public and then we'll talk about maybe a fair way to resolve this for now and then give you a chance to go back maybe and speak to DPD and the building commissioner and come up with something that works for everybody. You know, it's just a little bit of an unusual proposal that this board doesn't usually see something that's seeking that much relief. Okay, anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition to this petition? No opposition, so that portion of the public hearing is closed and I'll open up to the board for consideration for a continuance. Mr. Noon?
Before I make those motions about, your request about a continue, I'm confused because that what I'm about to do is making a motion to continue on this is, I'm confused about whether this started from the ground or from the deck. I mean, the sign, I mean, it really is. So, so with that, I'd like to have this matters, you know, continue so that the petitioner can speak to the commissioner and/or Diane to address this issue one and for all, I guess.
And just to let you know, my feeling is that's, the sign as it's proposed is not something I'm willing to support and, under that. And I understand you're trying to make a living there and any way we can help, but I think that proposed sign onto a deck even thirty feet in the air, but even eight feet off the deck, the way it's presented is not going to, you know, it's not something I'm going to support. So, you know, just take that for whatever it's worth and when you're speaking with the Department of Planning and Development, try to come up with something that they think that will approve as well, something that works for you because I'm sure there's a way you can come to some sort of agreement here. You're just, you're looking for too much relief right now based on what you've proposed.
Well, you know, and somewhat I'm kind of disagreeing with that because I'm, you know, you just have the picture Lowell itself because I know, I just got through tearing down all of that, the projects over there and stuff and then you can see a lot of the other areas, if you go in various neighborhoods and stuff. And I mean, I think somebody just doing something that's doing, especially the building he has, and I'm sure somebody must know a little bit of history of that building because there used to be two other ones there and that wasn't at one point was very, very good neighborhood and stuff. And you have to actually literally see the inside of that building, what this, him and his family actually did, they changed it and cleaned it up. It looks totally, totally new and I would commend somebody like that, even if they're living in Lowell, you know what I mean? You know, sixty-five percent of the, you know, the Asian community, they do their business over there.
I think, I think it's, you know, when I've gone by, I think it's a very well-run business and the issue is not inside of the building. You're not here on an issue that relates to anything inside the building, you're here asking for relief for something that's outside of the building that affects the entire neighborhood as a whole.
No, I understand that.
And I think more importantly, you're here asking for a special permit to approve a sign that exceeds what the code, the zoning code and the sign code allows you to do. So I'm wondering what mechanism we have to allow you to do that. So I don't even know if your petition is properly before us, it could be, but I've got some questions about it. Certainly nothing that I'd be comfortable voting on tonight. We're not here to throw any kind of wrench into his business plans or anything like that. We've never operated like that as a board. We've always tried to help business people out as much as we can to a certain extent, but not to the detriment of the rest of the neighborhood. It's not fair. I understand your point when you drive around and you do see other businesses and other signs like that, but every case we take, just so you know, is a case-by-case basis. We can't take as evidence from you that down the street they have this and down the street they have that. We have to consider each case as a case-by-case basis and the argument that he has it so we should have it is not really a great argument, at least in front of this board. It's confusing because in some ways it should be, but it's not. So, you know, you don't have to accept a continuance, we can vote on this tonight if you'd like. I'm just suggesting a continuance.
I have a final question before I leave. If the zone board still pay on the code?
Sir, can you pull the mic down a little, just closer to you?
If the zone board still believe on, still pay on, on the code like from, like DPD, I think I want the zone board vote for tonight. I don't want to waste time again because I already spent almost one thousand already for this process.
Okay, we'll take a vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give you a little history, I was the building inspector that watched over his project. It was a mess. He did a great job. What we're trying to do is stay you in the right direction so we can do the right thing to get him this sign. We're not telling him no, but we're not telling him yes. We're just trying to stay you in the right direction. It might not be a flat sign, it might be a V sign off the building where you still get the same type of exposure, but it's not sticking out like an arm, it's got a little V to it. You have to use your imagination when you're working with these things. That's why through the building commissioner and DPD, I think he can get what he wants, we just have to get a little bit better handle on it, okay? So if he wants to take a vote, that's fine, but I'm willing to help the gentleman. He's done a great job over there. It was burnt for like eight or ten years.
It's your call, sir.
Yeah, we'll do the continuance.
Continuance?
Yes.
Is the next meeting for June eighth enough time for you? Would you like the one after that?
That's fine.
Okay, I need a motion?
Make a motion to continue to June eighth.
Need a second. Roll call, please.
Continue to June eighth.
Continue to June eighth?
Continue to June eighth.
Continue to June eighth.
Continue.
Okay, sir, this matter's been continued to June eighth, there's no, you don't have to republish anything for notice, nobody will be notified, but the meeting will continue on that day and as we talked about, we suggest you talk to Mr. Camascio and he'll put you in touch with the right people and, and we'll see you on June eighth. Thank you, guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, the next petition is ZB 200914, a special permit for Coho Fuel Inc., 493 Princeton Boulevard. This is in a traditional single-family district and the petitioner would like to expand the existing non-conforming automotive fuel and repair service to include the sale of used automobiles in accordance with the zoning ordinance, Article 12, Section 12.6p, Table of Uses in Section 4.5.2 for non-conforming uses. With a representative of that petition, please address the board. Good afternoon.
Good evening. I'm Magno Coelho of Fort Jennifer Road. This is Francisco Coelho, the owner of also Fort Jennifer Road.
Sir, could you state your name and address for the record? One at a time, please.
My name is Francis Coelho, I live in Fort Jennifer Road, Lowell.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and there's some issues about wastewater which our engineer looked into. It's actually less pollutant causing for the vehicle sales than the current use right now of the, it's less of a pollutant factor for auto sales than it is for the current fuel, fueling station. So the wastewater isn't really an issue. The other...
Did you talk to your engineer or did you talk to the city engineer?
Our engineer.
Okay.
Our engineer looked at the Massachusetts code, which states that auto sales is less of a pollutant factor than the fueling station.
Okay, do you have anything you'd like to present to the board that you have for that or?
Engineer couldn't make it tonight and he didn't, he has the paperwork.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else, sir?
You know, we've caught, you know, we've been in touch with our neighbors and we've come to agreement that we'd be willing to do a privacy fence, which would make them happy and we'd be fine with that. And basically, the only issue I believe was the number of vehicle spaces for sale of the spots, number of spots.
And what have you come up with that?
We were going for twenty, but, you know, you guys obviously didn't. Trying to see, you know, wanting to see what you guys are willing to do, ten, twelve, you know.
Okay. All right, Bill, do you have anything to say?
Well, I think we'll, we'll talk to these guys first, maybe, then we'll open it up.
Okay, yeah, I have a couple of things. You mentioned that you spoke with the neighbors regarding the fence. I think at the last meeting, we talked about the length of the fence.
Okay.
Has anything changed with the actual length?
We're willing to do the entire length. The only issue would be at the front of the property, there's city trees that are in the way, they have to get trimmed or cut down that aren't city property, that aren't on our property, that would get in the way of the fence.
So you would, you would be willing to go to the front of the building if, if we decide to do that?
Not, well, the sides, along this, Lariat Street. I believe that, I believe that was a concern, was Lariat Street.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, along Lariat Street.
But you had in your original proposal, the fence ended, where did it end?
It fenced, it ended at the tree line because, because of the city trees impede us from going all the way across.
And also in your original plans, you had shown parking spaces for the cars would be on that same general area.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So I don't think you'd want a fence running all the way out.
Block, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Another question I have is, I had mentioned to you about a business office and you had mentioned that you may, you're going to use the same space that you currently use or...
Yeah, we have a rather large office, which, which has several rooms and we can devote one room.
You feel confident that you can run that business out of there with that same, same office?
Correct, yeah.
I don't know, I just kind of struggle with that because I...
There's several rooms in the office that aren't even used, which we could devote one or two rooms just for that purpose. There's only actually one room we use which, you know, for the vehicle.
That front office?
Yeah, exactly. There's two, because that used to be a dispatch for fuel trucks, so there's plenty of offices back there.
Okay, so that would be the plan, is that you would use those other rooms or a room?
Correct, yeah. Correct, yeah.
Okay. Sinage, you had told the board that you didn't provide?
We weren't planning on changing anything.
Okay. I hope you understand if you do come back with signage in the future, you'll have to come before the board to get approval for that.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. So the, you mentioned the wastewater, so that, that includes the storm water also?
Oh, the storm water, that's what it was, okay.
Yeah, okay.
My engineer referred to it as wastewater.
One other thing I have is, and it was discussed, there was some violations that your business had incurred because of used cars there.
Actually, I, I don't even believe there was a single violation for used vehicles for sale. I believe they were for unregistered vehicles on the property, which were mine and actually customers that were working on their vehicles, you know, dealers that I do work for and other customers there who had left unregistered vehicles on the property.
So have you had any other vehicles sitting there with, for sale signs or unregistered vehicles since our last meeting?
We have, and it's dealers that I, you know, I, they drop off their vehicles, take their dealer plates with them and we work on their vehicles. You know, the dealers aren't willing to leave their dealer plates there on the vehicles. They're not on the, you know, they're sitting on the side where all the other customers' vehicles are, you know, waiting for parts or, you know.
So, so you do work on other people's cars that have, that look like they are for sale, even though they're not for sale on your yard?
But you know what? But they have nothing to do with us. There's several dealers around that area that we do work for.
Okay.
But most of them don't even have numbers or anything, like they have nothing to do with us. They...
Yep. All righty. Mr. Chairman, I, I'll wait for everybody else to, I guess, make their discussions, but, you know, I would, one of the things I had asked if this gentleman had been in the business before, and I believe you had stated you hadn't been in, you'd been a mechanic with used cars and that kind of stuff.
No, and I have worked, I worked as a salesman for three years at one place.
I think when we start talking about the number of spaces we're going to provide, I'd also like to talk about maybe a review period, probation type period also, that we might want to establish with this gentleman, just to set up some type of track record and see how things progress. I also want to ensure that the neighbors, I want to give them an opportunity again to come up and speak to make sure everything's been clarified, that they've addressed at the last meeting. And I'll wait for the other board members to have something to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bill. Jack?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Perhaps my memory's a bit cloudy. When the issue of violations was brought up at the last meeting, I specifically asked the building commissioner if there were violations and he stated there was. And then you replied, and again, unless my memory's worse than I think, that it was a New Hampshire dealer and you were selling a vehicle for a New Hampshire dealer. Is that what you said?
No, the New Hampshire dealer was renting a spot from us, but I don't believe the violation was for that.
What was he renting a space for?
For, he was, he was...
Renting, New Hampshire dealer was renting a space for, from you to sell a vehicle in Massachusetts, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Vesna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask the same questions because that's what I heard too, last meeting, that there was a New Hampshire dealer sell a used car at your lot.
Correct.
Now, the question with the fence, how high is the fence again, on Lariat Street?
There is no fence. It's...
No, I mean...
Oh, how high would it be?
Yes.
I believe city code's six feet, so that'd be...
Six feet, all right. I know you also have the heating oil at that location. So heating oil is another business at that location, is that correct?
It's, we don't do heating oil. We, the, the rack is rented to the previous owner.
So what, the structure's still there? Is there any work or any business come out of that location?
Colonial Oil of Chelmsford uses that, that loading rack.
So that, that business being in operation, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it's not a separate business. It's the LLC, the actual owner of the property, rents that out to Colonial Oil.
Right. With that lot, there's two businesses. Is that correct?
I wouldn't consider it two businesses because technically that lot is owned by 493 Princeton Boulevard LLC. And technically it's a rental property that they rent to Coelho Fuel and they also rent to...
To you.
Coelho Fuel would be us.
Right.
And it also rents to Colonial Oil.
The storage on the back, you said, last time said a storage garage. What's going to be in that storage? Will there be any work done at that storage?
No, there's, there's storage, there's storage yards.
There's storage, okay. The hour of operations, what's the hour of operation?
Monday through Friday, six to eight, six AM to six to eight PM. And Saturday, eight AM to six PM. And then Sunday varies. It's usually eight AM to twelve PM.
The last time we spoke of, spoke about the storm management on this plan and you indicated at the opening of your presentation of this case that your engineering said that's not going to be a problem.
According to Massachusetts wastewater policy.
Yeah, right, right. Was there any report done on it?
No.
So by looking at it, the engineer said it's not going to be a problem?
It's, he said according to Massachusetts law that it's less, it's a less pollutant factor than the current use, so it shouldn't really affect it.
And I think the one...
Because the fuel is a more, more of a pollutant factor than the auto, than the vehicle sitting there.
Right. I think one of the other things that we brought up last time, your request for twenty car, if approved, I would, you know, certainly drastically cut it to maybe start off with a six. And I concur with my fellow board members that if approved, the conditions that you'll be reviewed every six months, at least just so to see, you know, how, how compliant you are with the...
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
This, this thing. So with that, I turn to my chairperson. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vesna. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. The question about storm water management that was raised last time was with respect to the city engineers' comments that were made.
Okay.
And storm water management is about managing the runoff on the property irrespective of the, any pollutants, which is a separate issue. So that's what we were looking for there was a, a plan to manage the storm water given you have a lot of paved surface there. So that was the, the issue that...
Oh, my, I believe my engineer took it as pollutant, but either way it shouldn't, the vehicles are going to be sitting on a slab and we're not paving anything new, so it shouldn't affect the wastewater in any way than it already, the way it presently sits.
What we were looking for, what I was looking for was a plan, if there was going to be any modifications to the lot, that you would be addressing that.
Uh, there shouldn't, there's not going to be any.
You'd only be talking about striping.
What's that?
You'd only be talking about putting locations for cars.
Yeah, there won't be any, no, no additional work done.
Another question that was raised last time was this is a busy intersection and that there's potential safety concerns here. And looking at the property, there's no obvious curb cuts, so there's access and egress in many different directions here.
Okay.
It would be invaluable to have a plan for traffic flow and understand how you'd be managing traffic on the site where people, cars would enter and exit and how that would be demarcated to address the concerns because we heard people, the neighbors, talking about traffic concerns as well. So have you considered how you would manage traffic flow here with any additional...
It, it shouldn't affect us where the vehicles are going to be parked. Vehicles don't actually drive. Where the vehicles would be parked would actually be in, start on, on top of our storage tanks, which is actually what we use to park customers' cars right now for repairs. It, no vehicles drive over where the proposed spots would be. So it shouldn't affect traffic in any way.
Well, we're talking about increased traffic in and out of your location would create, irrespective of, you know, hopefully you have a successful business and you generate more traffic. Therefore, the question becomes, how do we manage traffic flow where people would be entering and exiting and how that would be laid out?
Okay.
So that would, it would be important for me to see a plan to understand that the previous plan submitted didn't indicate that. The other comment, we had comments on locations of some of the proposed spots.
Um, yeah, we understand you guys don't want them on the corner, which is fine. You know.
So are there any new plans that you're submitting this evening or?
I'm not submitting any new plans. Basically, I was told to come and try to get a conditional approval based on a number of spots that you, that the chair, you know, the chair would agree to, or the zoning board.
Well, I was hoping personally that you'd come back and address some of the concerns that were raised in the previous meeting. Haven't seen that at this point. No further questions.
Okay, Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Same thing, I thought we were going to see a, a new plan with...
Well, we weren't sure on the exact number of spots, so that's why there was no new plan.
Landscaping, stuff like that, the fence. Who, who owns the property? Do you own the property or you own the property?
My dad owns the property. It's just an LLC technically owns it. His LLC technically owns it legally.
Okay, so you have, the gas station's going to run out of there, you have the oil business running out of there and you're going to have a used car business running out of there.
Well, the oil business doesn't really run out of there. It...
It runs out of there.
It feels...
He, he fuels his trucks from there. I know the, I know the old owners.
Okay.
They fuel their trucks. We thought we'd see a plan for landscaping. No cars in the corner, you know that, but we...
Yeah, I understand that.
We're looking for some low-growth landscaping there. You know, show us what you're going to do. It also was brought up about curb cuts. You're going to have to work with the building commissioner because I think you're going to have to reestablish curb over there because that's one giant cot from Lariat Street to Baldwin Street. It's one giant cot. There's no, I don't think there's any curbs.
No, there is curb there.
Is there curbs there still?
There, there is curb. There's a telephone pole, there's curb along this telephone pole. Bob was out there today.
Yeah, we were out there today and there is, the amount of curb that there is minimal. There's several hundred feet between the two streets where there is no curb at all. Just one, one area flows into the other. I was there with the traffic coordinator from DPD and one of our concerns would be to try and establish a, a traffic pattern or flow between the oil trucks and the parked cars and the cars coming in for gas and the cars coming in for repairs. And with the increased activity at that site, that was, that was a concern of theirs. I'd like to sit down with the owner and tell him what some of our concerns are too and trying to fine-tune that and come up with a better plan to show us some sort of a, a traffic flow. I, I have a question. How much of the, the oil, the heating oil business, how many trucks come and go every day approximately?
It's one truck, maybe twice a week.
Does he, does he leave the truck parked there?
No. He's there, he has a, another fueling station. That's basically just a backup, I believe, when he gets a full truckload that doesn't fit in his other tanks. He only puts three thousand gallons in there at a time and...
So the way you're describing it, it's minimal use?
Very minimal. That's why I don't consider it a business getting run out of that property.
I think, I think I would like, I think that an important thing here would be a traffic flow to see how this would go. And we're looking, and if the board's looking for a plan, looking at a plan that would carry him through the trial period, should the board approve it? And then what that, if it were to go beyond that, that, that plan would submit, it would show where the extra vehicles might be parked.
Also, Mr. Commissioner, is the height, the height of the fence, is it six or eight foot that's allowed?
It's six feet. He, he can build up to six feet without a permit. If he goes higher, he'll need a permit, which means we'll be talking to the neighbors to see if it's appropriate, just to make sure it's not a, a spite fence. Larger fences are, are recommended in areas for where there's stor, where storage is permissible for debris or other, other things. But at six feet without a permit and any higher than that, he would need a, a building permit.
Okay. We already talked about striping the fence. The waste, wastewater, you're going to get the engineer here, right, to sort of little report, at least showing us what's going on so we can send it upstairs to the engineers so see if they agree or disagree.
Okay.
And it suggests you do that in advance of, you know, the next meeting, just so we already, you know, if you presented, you're just going to continue it again?
Yeah, I understand.
Year hours, get, get us, something's going to tell us year hours. I mean, going over it, we're going to have to vote on this, so it should be on the plan. We should, if you could give us a bigger plan, I want to see landscaping. I wrote it all down. Right now, I'm, I'm more apt to give you five to six cars for a year.
Okay.
Year you come back, we put it out there, the neighbors can come back. If there's no problems, we can move it up. You might tell us, hey, six is enough. I'm doing enough business that six is enough.
Okay.
I'd also like to see if you bring vehicles in to be fixed from other dealers for nothing to be on the windows, not for sale, not the, you know, it gives a bad look.
I understand, yeah.
And after hearing from what you're saying, I'm going to believe you that they're dealer cars and they have numbers written on them and you're fixing them and...
Well, they don't even leave their numbers. They have prices written on them, which you'd have to consult.
Yep. So it'd just be nice to tell them, hey, get a clean of cars. They just can't sit for two weeks with a, you know, for sale, twenty-one hundred bucks.
No, I understand, yeah.
Year hours. The fence, obviously the fence, I can see a couple of neighbors shaking their head a little bit higher, so through the building commissioner, we could work on that, either eight or nine feet or whatever you'd be, you know.
Yeah.
As you come to the corner, it's going to get lower. And the curb cuts. And that, we'd like to see it spruced up, you know, and we have some, you're going to need some parking on the, I, I've laid it out, I'll, I'll rip it out and give it to you.
Okay.
That I think that we're all looking for.
Well, sprucing up is actually, we're in the process of, you know, we've already spoke with the commissioner, we're in the process of putting up a new building.
Yeah.
So that, that alone will...
I, I think through the consensus, we're here to work with you, we're just trying to get every, I, I like everybody else, my fellow board members, I thought we'd see a new plan with less cars, the fence, landscaping.
Well, we weren't sure on the number of spots, that's why, you know, he suggested not, you know...
It's my, it's my opinion, it'd be between five and six. I think that, I think everybody else would agree. I'm, I'm speaking for myself. It would be a good start for you because we've had problems with other dealerships in, in the city and we just want, don't want to cause a problem over there. And again, you might come back after year and say, the neighbors say the best in the world and say, hey, I don't want any more than six. Six works for me. It's, it's hot enough to control, you know, business might be a little bit too much for you. But if you agree to that, I agree to it, okay? And I'll rip this out and give it to you. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Don't mind.
Okay, and I assume that, Bob, if there's going to be a change in the height of the fence, is that going to require notice, public hearing, or is that something that they can do within your office?
No, that's restricted just to my office.
Okay. Okay. All right, now open up to the public. Okay, okay. All right, now open up to the public. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to address the board in opposition?
Um...
Ma'am, if you could step up, guys, if you could just step over, if you could step up, state your name and address for the record, and then tell me what you have to say.
My name is Penny Cartier. I live at 71 Lauriette Street, which is at the end of Lauriette Street, which is kinda in the back. I am okay with everything that the board is proposing, including an eight-foot to nine-foot stockade fence is what you asked for before, and the landscaping. Originally, I was opposed to this, but if they clean up and do everything they're supposed to do, I don't have a problem with it. But where I live, on the end of Lauriette Street, second floor, if I live, look out my bedroom window behind the garage where you've been doing a lot of work, when you put the fence up, is that gonna be like cleaned up?
Ma'am, you have to, ma'am, just the procedures, you have to address us, and then we can...
Okay, well, I would just like in back of the blue garage in the back, where they've been doing landscaping and cutting up the trees, make sure it's just cleaned up and looking nice as you request.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bailey?
So, the fence, now I'm confused. Is it chain link, or is it stockade?
The last time I was here, the board said stockade.
It doesn't matter to us. We can do stockade, chain link.
And the height is going to be what?
I would like if they said eight feet.
Eight feet?
Yeah, if they said eight and nine.
Well, I thought, I thought the representation was you're gonna work with the building commissioner as to what the heights are gonna be at various places. I mean, is that something that's acceptable to, I mean...
I think, I think the revised plan should indicate where the fence is going, any exact height, and what the proposed law will look like when he's completed cleaning things up or adding things.
Okay. And so, I assume this, you know, we're talking about a continuance here, sir. Those plans, everything does need to be done on there, hopefully submitted to the, to the building department or the zoning department in advance of the meeting, so maybe we can get a look at it before, so we're not all just sitting here looking at it that night. It just makes it, you know, we'd have a better understanding if we have a little bit of time to take a look at it.
I understand.
And...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Sorry. How many spaces, when are we gonna decide how many spaces we're going to grant?
Wouldn't you mean how many, how many cars is he...
How many spaces we're gonna grant for the original proposal? When will we get to that stage? You're asking for plans for this gentleman to put together, so if he's...
Yeah, I'd say that'd be nice to know the number of spots you guys would agree on. That way, I can come up with plans with that number of spots where they would be laid out on the property.
Well, I have no problem with the six that was suggested by, I think a couple of people suggested six.
No, that's fine with me, but...
I think if he's, if he's going to go through the trouble and the expense of providing the board with a, with a plan, I think you should look at that second number that he's proposing. And if the initial number, six, eight, whatever that is, works out for the trial period, and he expands further, that second number, the plan should show an additional six or eight, or whatever the board thinks is appropriate.
Right, so maybe if you do that, the one, the one phase with six to eight, and then we can decide, when you give us the plan with the second phase being another six to eight.
Okay.
And, you know, after a year of it, so you don't have to go re-engineering everything. We'll see how it goes.
Okay.
If that's with the board, I mean, we're gonna have to vote on this, but, so, just so we're clear, Rick, do you wanna outline the, so, and if anybody has any questions about anything else they wanna add in, just outline what we're expecting from the plan?
Okay. New plan showing the landscaping. We're looking for landscaping on the corner of Princeville Boulevard and Baldwin.
What are you looking for? Grass, shrubs?
Well, I think just, you're gonna have to do some low shrubs over there, that's 'cause of, 'cause of the intersection. And again, you work with the building department, whatever Mr. Camacho comes up with. We'd like to see a little bit of spruce stuff. You already cleaned it up. You work on a stockade fence with the building department between eight and 10 feet with the neighbors. The neighbor would like behind that garage to stay clean.
And it is, it was...
Okay. Well, just, it'll be part of the condition that that place will be, that spot will be stay clean for, for a while, until things either get better with the neighborhood or you need it. Okay, so you'll be keeping it clean so the cars don't get back there or other stuff.
Yeah.
Number of cars, like Mr. Chairman said, the first phase would be six to eight, so show us the first phase of six to eight, and then a year later, say, if things work out, I'd like to put another six to eight in this area. Just lay them out. Stripe in the parking lot and get in the flow of the, of the traffic, how the traffic will enter and exit. Customer parking, you need at least two spaces for the service bay and two spaces for your, the car sales.
Well, actually, we'd only need one, 'cause I believe you need one space for 15 cars. So, we'd actually only need one.
Yes, okay. Well, just show them, 'cause if you...
Actually, we'd probably maintain the same ones that are there.
If you do go up to that number, you're gonna need the spaces, you're gonna need the handicapped. The wastewater report, so we can, something, so the city engineers can look at it. Again, we already went through striping. Hours of operation, you can put that right on the plan, these will be our hours of operation, Monday, Tuesday, through Sunday, or Saturday.
Okay.
Working on the curb, curb cuts with the commissioner again.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's tough, 'cause cars fly in and out of there, and...
Well, that's what we're trying to do too. We're trying to, we're trying to give direction here, not so people just fly in, fly out.
Well, I know, but, you know, what happens when a customer bounces off a curb, you know?
Well, that's, that's at least, you know...
They won't do it twice.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
You'll have, we're looking for a one-year probation, so keep that in mind.
Okay.
And I think that's about it.
Anybody else, if anything else they'd like added to the plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering, and this is, I guess, a question directed to the commissioner, and in good faith, I guess, towards the petitioner. In the interim between now and the continuing date that is approved, can we expect that you would at least avoid the appearance of impropriety, and any vehicles that you're repairing will not have numbers indicating the potential for a sale, so it gives the appearance of impropriety? Is that something you'd be willing to comply with, so if one of us drove by, we won't see a vehicle there with a for-sale sign and a dollar figure on the vehicle?
That's fine. Yeah, no, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think you, you know what we expect for next meeting, so I'd entertain a motion to continue for review?
And make a motion to continue this matter?
Need a second?
Second motion.
Roll call, please. And we're continuing to June 8th.
Continue to June 8th.
Continue to June 8th?
Continue to June 8th.
Continue.
Continue, June 8th.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, this matter's been continued to June 8th. There'll be no further public notice. Anybody wishing to address the board regarding this petition should show up here that night, June 8th. Thanks, guys. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Okay, the first order of new business tonight is ZB 2009, number 19. This is a request for a special permit, Back Bay Signs LLC, 645 Rogers Street, Regional Retail District, and the petition would like to allow the internal illumination of a pylon front fascia and side elevation signs for Jiffy Lube in accordance with 6.3.4 of the zoning ordinance. Would a representative of 645 Rogers Street please address the board?
Good evening. My name is Jason Perillo. I live at 279 Harvard Street, Cambridge, Mass. I'm with Back Bay Sign Company. I'm also here representing Jiffy Lube and JWEG Realty Trust, the owner of the property. I'm also here tonight for the other Jiffy Lube property at Middlesex Street, but we're gonna, we're gonna start with, we'll start with Rogers, is that correct?
Yeah, I have to call it as a public hearing each one.
I understand.
So, we'll just, we'll start and finish with Rogers, and then we'll start over with the next one.
Okay. Jiffy Lube is in the process of doing a facelift to a lot of their locations around the country, and this property at Rogers Street has an existing pylon sign, and it also has an existing front wall sign, so we have proposed to replace the existing internally illuminated pylon sign with a new internally illuminated sign, and replace the existing internally illuminated wall sign with a new internally illuminated wall sign. One of the things I'd like to note is that the existing internally illuminated wall sign is a backlit sign cabinet, so that the entire face lights up. The new sign is made of aluminum with routed-out lettering, so that really only the lettering illuminates. There's also an LED detail part of this sign, which throws some, kind of like some external lighting elements to this sign. But it's a very nice-looking sign. It's a more modern-looking sign. It stays a lot cleaner than what's, what's there right now. The proposed new wall sign is a fascia sign, constructed very similar to the way that the, that the pylon sign is, is constructed. It's, it's an aluminum sign with routed out, so that only the letters illuminate. The fascia band, it does extend across the entire front top of the building, which is really an architectural feature. The, the part of it that actually says Jiffy Lube is, is small. It's only, comprises 15.11 square feet of that sign. And I'll just also note that the pylon sign, the proposed pylon sign is, let me just make this right, is 50 square feet, and the existing pylon sign also has a reader board, so the total of the existing pylon sign is 58 square feet. So, we're bringing down the, the square footage.
So, what is the total square footage?
The, well, the total square footage of the, of the proposal?
Of the, of the sign?
Of the pylon sign?
Yes.
Fifty. The proposed.
Okay, so I guess this is, I had this, we had this issue come up in an earlier petition tonight, but if it, it says here, if it exceeds 30 feet, then you also need a variance as well. Am I wrong about that?
Thirty square feet?
I believe that's what, I mean, she has, this is coming from the design planner, it says, "Please note the size of the proposed pylon sign as shown in the application is larger than the existing sign and larger than what is defined in the sign code. If the applicant chooses to pursue the sign as proposed, it is likely they will need to seek a variance as well as a special permit."
Well, I can make, make this easy. I can propose, right now, cut that, cut the sign right down to 30 square feet. They have a 30-square-foot version of this exact sign.
Okay, I think that takes care of that issue.
Yep.
And then, the DPD recommend denial of the fascia sign on the front facade for these reasons. The existing fascia sign on the front facade is not internally illuminated. The proposed sign is internally illuminated. Because there is already one internally illuminated sign located on site, I recommend externally illuminated wall signage for this location.
Okay.
Could you address that, I mean...
Yeah, I can. The one way we can address that is to allow this proposed sign to just be externally illuminated. We can, we can add goose-neck type lights above the area that says Jiffy Lube on that fascia band. Because the preference of Jiffy Lube is to go ahead with these fascia bands, 'cause it's really an architectural, more of an architectural feature of the building. It's a facelift to the building. So, the way that, if, if the DPD is against internally illuminating that sign, we can add goose-neck lights above it, so that, that it will only shine on the portion of that, of that, that fascia band that says Jiffy Lube. So, like, you know, three to, three to four goose-neck lights, I think, would take care of that.
Okay. Did you get an opportunity to look at any of...
No, I haven't. I wish I had, and actually, I was told, when I filed this, I was told that, you know, that the planning would look at it, and I would be notified, and I never was.
No, it really would help if they did notify you, because then you could address these things, so...
It definitely would have.
And you have this other proposal right behind it. It's just that, at least from my point of view, some of the changes for us to make and approve them, I mean, I hate to have you come back to the next meeting, but, you know, I have, I have a copy I wrote on. Does anybody have a clean copy of the, Bob, could you give that to him, take a look?
You're referencing the memo from DPD?
Dated May 8th?
Yes.
Yeah. I apologize, sir. You should've gotten this in advance.
Yeah, it definitely would've helped, because I could've brought in, I could've brought in new exhibits.
Yeah, well, I might give you an opportunity to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, you know what, in the, I guess in the interest of expediency, we should probably just continue both, and I'll just come back with new exhibits.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's really, you know...
Yeah, and then, and then hopefully it'll be quick next time.
Yeah, it shouldn't, I think the sign looks great. I mean, I don't, I think you're just exceeding the limit, and if you can, if you can coordinate that with the department of planning, again, I apologize on their behalf for not getting you that.
Sure, and actually, it gives me a chance to talk to Jiffy Lube and make sure that I'm doing exactly what they wanna do too, so it's probably the best.
And the next meeting is, is...
May 27th is the Wednesday meeting.
May 27th is the Wednesday. That's a Wednesday meeting, is that...
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, so we're gonna have to call both petitions in a row, I assume. Before we do that, is there anybody here wish, well, go ahead, Bill.
Why not?
You mentioned reader board?
Yeah, the existing sign, at Rogers Street, the existing pylon sign has a reader board under it, and we're gonna remove that. It's just, it's gonna be just the header that says Jiffy Lube.
Okay, anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition? And hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and we'll consider a continuance until the May 27th meeting, which is a Wednesday.
And make a motion to continue this matter to May 27?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue to May 27.
Mr. Gary?
Continue to May 27th?
Mr. Knopf?
Continue to May 27.
Mr. Knopf?
Continue.
Mr. Van Ness?
Continue.
Okay, so you've been unanimously continued to May 27th. There's no further public notice. Anybody wishing to address the board on this petition can show up that night, but we'll see you May 27th, and I'm gonna have to call the other one individually and kinda just go through the formality of what we just did. But definitely work with them and get it all straightened out, and I'm sure you'll be on the same page. The sign looks good.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do we have to vote on the other one also, to continue?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that. I have to call it.
All right.
Call it, so I'm gonna do that now. So, the next petition on is ZB 2000, 2009, number 20, special permit for signs. The applicant is Back Bay Sign LLC. Is he here? Oh, okay. LLC, 1717 Middlesex Street, Unit 9, Regional Retail District. The petitioner would like to allow the internal illumination and refacing of pylon, as well as the addition of internally illuminated front fascia sign for Jiffy Lube in accordance with Section 6.3.4 of the sign regs of the City of Lowell. Would a representative of Back Bay Signs at 1717 Middlesex Street please address the board? Welcome, sir. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yep, I'm Jason Perillo with Back Bay Sign, also representing Jiffy Lube and JWEG Realty Trust. I live at 279 Harvard Street, Cambridge, Mass.
And are you requesting a continuance?
Yes.
Okay, the applicant is requesting a continuance to confer with the Department of Planning and Development and Signs regarding some changes they suggest. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition? And hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. And any board members have anything to say? Then I'll entertain a motion to continue this until the May 27th public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue to May 27th.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue to May 27.
Mr. Gary?
Continue to May 27th?
Mr. Knopf?
Continue to May 27.
Mr. Van Ness?
Continue.
Mr. Van Ness?
Continue.
So, you've been unanimously continued. The next public hearing will be May 27th. There'll be no further notice to anybody. Anybody wishing to address the board that night can show up that night, and thanks for your reason, sir.
Thank you very much.
See you then. Bye-bye. Okay, the final, the final petition tonight is ZB 2009, number 21, a special permit. The applicant is Phil Rice, doing business as Castle Hill Adult Day Health Center. The location is 225 Stedman Street, Units 31 and 32. The applicant, applicable zoning bylaw is L1 Light Industrial. The petitioner would like to allow for the operation of a licensed establishment for the care of the sick, aged, disabled, and convalescent persons, otherwise known as the Adult Daycare Facility, in an L1 zoning district, in accordance with the Table of Uses, Section 12.3J of the zoning ordinance. Sir, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney William Early, E-A-R-L-Y, professional address 66 Emerson Street in the City of Haverhill. I appear this evening on behalf of the petitioner, Castle Hill Adult Daycare. Due to lateness of the hour, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll be brief.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The applicant, as stated, Mr. Chairman, is requesting a special permit for the operation of an adult daycare center in the light industrial zone. The subject property, that being 225 Stedman Street here in the City of Lowell, consists of two condominium units, excuse me, those being Units 31 and 32, as depicted on the plan that was submitted. The, at this point in time, the applicant, Castle Hill Adult Daycare Center, does not own the property, but is under a purchase and sale agreement to purchase those two condominium units. The, the two subject condominiums were constructed approximately 1988, and contain approximately 5,500 square feet, more or less. It's located in the Stedman Park Commercial Condominium Complex. One of the units, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, was previously used as a bowling supply store, bowling supply sports shop, excuse me, and one of the other units was used as a house of worship. The applicant respectfully requests a special permit to conduct an adult daycare facility in these two units. An engineered plan of the intended use of destruction of the structure has been submitted with the plan. By way of background, the Castle Hill Adult Daycare Center is a facility that's been in operation for the past 12 years. It's a going concern in good standing with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. At present, it functions in the town of Chelmsford. At this point in time, the lease on the Chelmsford property is coming up, and the applicant's desires of purchasing this property here in the City of Lowell for purposes of relocating the adult daycare facility from Chelmsford to the City of Lowell. Approximately 35 adults receive support at the facility. The hours of operation of this particular facility are seven, between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, the 35 adults that receive support are dropped off at the location, and they're picked up at approximately 4:00 PM. There are no overnight stays here. The 35 persons are transported by van to and from the facility. There's no meals cooked on the property. There's food, prepared food brought into the facility for the, for the patients. We submit that the adult daycare facility at these two condominium units would be less onerous and very compatible with the existing businesses in the area. As far as parking goes, there are some, and I want to apologize to the board, my brief that I submitted indicated that there were 136 line spots. That was an error. There are 128 spots in the facility, and there are some 36 units. If you multiplied 128 spaces by 36 units, it comes out to approximately 3.5... three point five parking spaces per unit. And on any given day, at the Adult Daycare Center, there are some five employees that work, that would be working at this facility. They have approximately seven points, some seven point two or thereabouts, parking spots at those proposed units. Uh, the, um, the game plan is for the, um, the vans to drop the people off, the, the patients, if you will, between seven, eight o'clock, and the game plan calls for the, uh, the vans to drop the, uh, the patients off, so that they can access Units thirty-one and thirty-two from the west side of the property, and so that when, after the, the patients are dropped off, the vans will be proceeding eastbound, if you will, towards the, uh, Stedman Street access route. The vans that'll be dropping off the patients, the thirty-five patients that will be serviced there, the vans will not be parked there, they'll be leaving upon, upon discharge of the, uh, the patients, and will return later on in the day to pick up the, uh, the patients at approximately four o'clock. With that, I'm happy to report that we have a couple of representatives here from the, uh, the facility, should anybody have any questions. We have the director of the Castle Hill Adult Daycare Center, and the, uh, one of the managing partners here, who could address any questions relative to the build-out of the property or any other plans that they have there. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would close my presentation. Subject to any questions you may have.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, Bill, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the parking, uh, would you plan on having any, I guess, guests or visitors that would come to the facility to meet, to meet with people, or is that prohibited?
State your name and your address.
Maybe I shouldn't use the term prohibited, but, you know, you're not, that isn't a normal course of, uh...
Sure.
My name's Tim Barry, I reside at ten Reno Drive in West Newbury, Mass. Also have another office right over here at sixty-seven Middle Street. Um, we, we would have on occasion, uh, you may have a therapist stop in, or a counselor stop in, if need be, when we assess the needs of the patient, depending upon the need that the patient would have, we may have an outside professional come in, you know, for an hour here, an hour there, uh, you know, so that, that could happen, but it's very infrequent.
So it's not the type of facility like a, a friend or a relative stops in and spends three or four hours?
No, no, it's support for family members that are caring for a loved one at home, so they can go out and go to work and be, uh, gainfully employed. So if, if you had a, you know, parent, we would take that during the day, so you could come to work, and then we would take them home at the end of the day, so they usually don't have any visitors, we're giving the family a break during the day.
Yeah, the question's more based around the parking, as the counselor had stated, and, uh, just curious if, you know, you might have twenty cars there in a day as opposed to just your employees.
And we have just our employees, and very infrequently, maybe another car. And I would state that the, the property is a first-come, first-served basis, and there are, we've done studies at different times of the day, and there's never been an issue as far as open spaces, always have been open spaces during the day there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think the, uh, idea of the business is, uh, one that I would highly support, and hopefully this board will support. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Jack?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I completely agree with, uh, Mr. Bailey. The positives I see, it's a needed service. It's an established, ongoing business. Uh, they're gonna purchase condominiums, which is gonna contribute to the tax base. I love the hours of operation, seven, eight, or four P. Uh, it's handicap accessible, no weekends, no nights. To me, it's a win-win all around. The only slight question, uh, Mr. Bailey addressed, and Mr. Barry responded, uh, were the parking issues. Uh, beyond that, I think this is, uh, another good example of, hopefully, the city reaching out to a much-needed service in the community, and I would highly support it.
Okay, Vesna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go back to the parking. How many parking do you get from this two-unit of the condo?
I, I believe, um, sir, that there's no deeded spots. Is, is that, was that the question was? Like, if there was... There, there's no deeded spots with the, the unit.
So, so the parking is first come, first served?
Correct.
Aside from those five staff that you have, I, how often do you anticipate it, a therapist or counselor, or, uh, other professionals who come and giving a workshop or whatnot?
I would have...
Yep.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir. I would have to defer to Mr. Barry.
Rice, please, sir.
With all, with all due respect, he's, he's...
Thank, yes, thank you.
Currently, the program we are operating in Chelmsford, we, we don't even have any outside therapists. We don't have a need of anybody attending the program at this time that needs an outside therapist or a counselor coming. That is not to say in the future, we might not have somebody that has that need, and based on that need, we would invite them over, but it's usually a one person at a time.
Counsel indicated in his presentation of the cases that van will be transported patient from and to, from and to what, the clinic or hospital, or...
No, no, just to this location. They're coming from either from their own home, or their son or daughter's home, or they're in independent living, and we pick them up at their current residence, bring them to our program, and then transport them back home.
So family member would not necessarily, uh, bring their parent to the site? The van would go pick them up?
Correct.
Right. I concur with my fellow board member, this is a, a program that certainly, uh, will be beneficial to the, uh, the elders in our community, so I'm, I would highly support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my, you know, I've gone by there several times, and I think my only issue is with the parking. I didn't know it was first come, first served, but it seems like, uh, if, if you have, you total, you have two, you'd have two units, or one unit would become, two units would become one.
That's correct.
And you have how many employees? So I have to assume every employee's coming in their own vehicle?
Five, but I'm told some of, some of the, um, employees' carpool, I'm led to believe, but call it five, Mr. Chairman, for the sake of argument.
And does that include nurses, or whoever you're required to have there? So, if I could ask you, maybe, maybe I'm better off directing them to, uh, the director?
My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
No, no problem.
The program is based on a one-to-six ratio, but it's, it's staggered. It's, the operation is from seven to four-thirty, but we may have somebody there from seven to twelve. We may have someone exit the program at, at two, depending on, uh, family needs or family concerns, or arrivals and departures of their residents. So at any given time, we'll have a one-to-six ratio to the total enrollees, enrollees in the program, but we probably wouldn't have more than five staff members at the program at any given time. Most it would be, there would be six, if it's, uh...
So you're saying you, you wouldn't be utilizing more than five spots?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, my, the reason I ask is I've gone by there at several different times, twelve, two, four, five, it's very congested there. It doesn't look like there's ever too many spots available.
Did you pull out around the building, or just in the front, along Stedman Street?
I drove through the front and around towards the back, and I couldn't tell exactly, you know, what, I, I didn't know it was first come, first served, so I thought some businesses just weren't open, but...
Right.
I don't know, you know, why is it first come, first served? Do you have any idea?
I don't, that was, uh, prior construction, the previous owners and, uh, you know, in their condo docs, like, you know, condo association, that's how they established it. I can't answer to that.
Do you have any, um, did you speak to the condo association? Are they on board with all of this? Is it...
If I could call upon one of the other gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, please, state your name.
My name is, uh, Phil Rice, I reside at four twenty-seven East Broadway in Haverhill. Um, yes, we actually, uh, met with the condo association because we wanted to provide, uh, handicap access to the facility, and with that, um, you know, we explained entirely the process of the program and how it worked, and they gave us a letter of endorsement, and it's just pending, uh, your approval and, um, some design applications that they want to see.
Okay. All right, Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First, I think this is a great use of the, of a condo in this, in this area. I have some questions on, on the plan as submitted. There are two areas labeled other unit on the proposed lower level and the proposed second floor. Can you explain, is there, is that part of the actual condo that you're purchasing? If so, what's the use, proposed use?
Once again, Mr. Rice.
Sir?
I believe the, um, the other unit is a small basement area that the condo association, um, early on has taken control of, it's not part of the deeded property, and, um, that's where they meet and have their board meetings. And the upper-level space is part of the facility, existing facility, that we're buying the two units. Presently, one is occupied by a CPA, and the other, the other, um, section above, the second unit, is empty. We're gonna, our whole program is entirely based on the first floor, and we have no change to the physical footprint of the building. We're doing some interior petition changing, that's all.
Are there plans to use that space at all, or to sublease it, or anything?
The, um, the upper level, um, potentially, we will probably have our storage up there and, um, maybe break room, private office, that type of thing for the, for the administrator.
But there wouldn't be a requirement for additional parking, or...
No, no, it's the same people.
So it's all for the same?
That space would be available to us, you know, we own it, there's a stairway that goes up to it, but it's not part of the physical program.
It's unclear from the plan as submitted that there's even access to that space, it looks like it's sealed.
Uh, no, there's a stairway on both sides, there's one stairway on the front. It's, it is kind of a confusing facility, but there's a stairway on the front, and there's a stairway at the rear that accesses the units.
It's just not shown on the plan, perhaps, but...
I believe the architect was just drawing what we were gonna use.
Okay. No further questions.
Okay, Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You had mentioned about the ramp, the handicap, handicap access ramp, the hash-marked area, so you have to go to the, uh, condo association to put that in? Because you're gonna be, you're gonna end up eliminating probably, what, it appears to be possibly three, couple parking spots over there?
Um, actually, we eliminate, we don't eliminate any parking at all.
In that area?
Yeah, no, what happens is, um, that ramp follows along the shrub bed, and that's why we went to the condo association, to make sure that we could build that ramp in that position, but we don't lose any parking. Matter of fact, if you look at the, uh, parking plan, I believe you can see, um, how they, we dotted the parking in front of it with bollards, and we're looking to put a bench at the very end of the ramp.
Okay. And you won't be subleasing any of the building? I know you said there's a CPA in there right now.
Well, there's, there is a, there's a CPA there now, and we don't intend on kicking him out.
You don't intend on kicking him out?
No, he's, he, he's actively there, he's been there for twelve years, I believe.
So now you're gonna mix you, so you have, you, you're parking's first come, first served. I know the facility very, very well, and in the wintertime, it gets pretty cramped over there, that's why.
Are you telling me you want me to kick him out?
Well, you got, you got mixed juice over there, so now if he has five, if, if he's entertaining, or customers, two or three, and they all come in separate cars, I mean, I know it's first come, first served over there, believe me, I know it is. Like you said, uh, we want it to work for you, we don't want you to have a problem. Now, now you have, you're running two businesses out of it, he needs X amount of parking spaces by rule, you need X amount of parking spaces by rule. I, I'd like to ask a building commissioner, square footage-wise, what does their facility need for parking, Bob? Are they at four hu, one for every four hundred square feet?
Well, the formula they're using is the number of, um, clients, there's a ratio there, like you explained, number of clients versus the number of, uh, uh, support staff that they, they have, and they're basing it strictly on the support staff. Uh, we ran those numbers all around, and it, it's a very tight area, and I don't know what the conditions were when they, uh, or approved, when approvals were given when that area was constructed, but it is tight. And it seems that, based on what we've seen in looking, talking with these folks and in running the numbers, it appears it's gonna be, it would probably work, especially where the clients won't be driving at all. Uh, it is, it, it is a tight figure. But we're basing those numbers on parking spaces based on the, not the square footage so much, but the number of staff that he'll be having on-site.
Okay, so you, you wouldn't have to base it off the square footage, then?
Not, not in this case.
The way it comes out of the cold?
No, we, we couldn't, it wouldn't be fair to them in this case, that, that would really limit the use of those, that facility.
Okay. So you're talking, the other thing is, um, the cellar, that's a general meeting room down in that small section, that's a part in the, uh, first unit, the lower level?
Yes.
Okay. That's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody? Anybody here wish to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition? In opposition to this petition? And hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, so what is the wish of the board?
Would make a motion to approve this petition tonight, Mr. Chairman?
Second motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Approve.
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 Okay, folks, you've been unanimously approved, uh, we do need you to come up and sign, do you have that plan? One plan and give it to Stephanie. Right here, just, if you could... Just sign a date anywhere in the margin, and you can give it to Stephanie right over there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you, sir.
And good evening.
Good luck. Okay. Now, uh, we have minutes to accept for the November tenth and the November twenty-fourth meetings. Everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes? Okay, as far as the, um, November tenth, we have a motion?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the, um, November tenth minute, sir.
All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries? Is there a motion for the November twenty-fourth?
I would make a motion, sir, to, uh, accept the, uh, November twenty-fourth minute, sir.
Okay, any second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting November twenty-fourth minutes? Say aye.
Aye, sir.
Any opposed? No, motion carries? Any other business?